Joining us this evening for our City Council meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Vlad.
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you had remained standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Wayne Shipman, representing Evangelical Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here and lead you all in prayer. Just a little aside, I am also the current president for Portina Valley Interfaith Fellowship. And I've only got a couple more months, but it's a wonderful thing that we have here in Pocatello, and I represent them also.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you for your providential love. Help guide this council as they deliberate over the many needs of this community. Grant us all generous hearts and curious minds. Keep us ever in your watchful eye. Help us to remember those in our community who need resources, housing, food, companionship, and care. May we always default to God's admonition to love our neighbor. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda, Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion in a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Work session of May 9, 2024, and Budget Development Meetings of May 23, June 3, June 4, and June 5, 2024. B, Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for a period of July 16 through 31, 2024. C, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to approve the Treasurer's Report for June 24 showing cash and investments as of June 30, 2024. D, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Juliana Schumer to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee, filling a long-term vacancy. Juliana's term will begin August 2, 2024, and expire January 1, 2028. E, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Tanya Wilks to continue serving as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, representing School District Number 25. Tanya's term will begin August 19, 2024, and expire August 19, 2026. F, Council Decision Zoning Amendment for Property Located at 864 East Poplar Street. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request from DW Investors LLC to rezone approximately 0.18 acres of land located at 864 East Poplar from residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential commercial professional RCP. G, Council Decision Park Place Planned Unit Development Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request by CMH Holdings LLC for a planned unit development consisting of approximately 10.34 acres located west of Interstate 15 and north of Ammon Park. Subject to conditions, the development shall consist of 86 residential townhome lots and two common open space lots. H, Council Decision Reconsideration of Planning and Zoning Commission Denial for Permanent Platt Application for Park Place Townhomes. Council may wish to adopt this decision overturning the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the preliminary Platt for Park Place Townhomes and granting said preliminary Platt subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda Items A through H as outlined in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Proclamations. We have no proclamations, and so we'll move to Agenda Item Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. August 8, 9 a.m. will be City Council Work Session. August 15, 5:30 p.m., Council Clarification Meeting, 6 p.m. regular City Council Meeting. Other events: August 3, Summer Sizzler Fun Run. Contact the Parks and Recreation Department for more information. August 4, Last Municipal Band Concert of the Season from 7 p.m. to 8 p.m. at the Lower Ross Park Band Shell. The concerts are free to the community. August 18, Ross Park Aquatic Center's Last Day of the Season. Open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. Due to the extreme heat we are experiencing, the following city facilities will serve as cooling shelters for those in need. Hours are City Hall Thursday and Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Animal Shelter, Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. They're closed on Sunday. Pets are welcome too. Marshall Public Library, Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., and they are closed on Sunday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One item we might add, it may be a little preliminary. It seems like it's been a short, hot summer, but Welcome Back Orange and Black is coming up August 19. ISU will be back with us any day now.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you for reminding me that. Welcome Back Orange and Black, August 19, and hence that because of the early school start, that's why our aquatic center is closing. So, good reminder. Thank you. Okay, with that, then we will move to Agenda Item Six as a public hearing, Proposed Fiscal Year 2024 Sanitation Fee Amendments and Resolution. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed mid-year fee changes amending Exhibit S sanitation department fees for the city's fee schedule for sanitation services for fiscal year 2024. Council may wish to adopt the proposed amendment by resolution. I declare the public hearing open. We'll have staff or applicant. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. What is before you tonight is a public hearing to establish handling fees at the recycling facility that was approved at the previous council meeting. Just kind of a reminder, we, if I may, a little timeline. We were approached. We were told we can recycle or we have to cancel it. We made the decision to keep the program alive by going down this road, and so we are requesting tonight, or we are having a public hearing to discuss those proposed fees. And so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions, council? Councilmember Mangum?
So, for clarification and just refresher, the idea of having another third party to come in to do the recycling for us was out of the question because there are no third parties that are facilitating this at the moment. Correct?
We do believe there is a potential third party, but as we've researched that, we believe that's a short-term solution that isn't going to pay off in the long run. So, in our opinion, at this moment, we have two options. We purchase the facility or we eliminate curbside recycling.
Well, I want to remind everybody, though, we've already approved the purchase of the facility. That is gone. This is for the ability to charge the fees that we have been paying, and everybody's been paying for this year from now until October 1.
Yes. So, we're doing an amendment tonight. Thank you, Mayor, of the 24s.
Yeah.
And going forward, it would be in the...
And going forward, it's in the fee resolutions going forward. You don't have another question? Any other questions? Okay. Before you leave, Tom, have we had any correspondence as the City Council has not seen? Okay, Madam Clerk, have we had any correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I oppose the application, as I stated at the last meeting, that the government's job not to be in the garbage business or the recycling business. I don't know if you've ever approached Pacific Recycling, even put it out in the world that you were looking for that, and if anybody wants to even buy that facility to help support. But I oppose it. It's not your position to do it, and people just are being feed and taxed to death. Thank you. Share in the name of Jesus, be true to God and the Constitution.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay. Would you like to just have a few words?
So, Republic Service is the company that purchased this and is no longer doing this operation. They are the second-largest hauler in the nation, and so if they want out, everybody wants out right now. So, I think trying to privatize this would be difficult. I don't, we've been down that road. We've been that way with Western. We've been that way with Republic. Well, now we're here, and nobody wants to do it anymore, and so here we are.
We have a participation rate of...
Seventy-seven percent.
Seventy-seven percent participation rate, so it sounds like it's pretty important to the community to have this. Okay. Any other questions for Tom? All right, thank you. Then I declare the public hearing closed. Council Decided, before you, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Six as outlined.
Is that with the resolution? Is that a...
Yeah, you're including the resolution.
Including the resolution.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then we have a motion from Councilmember Mangum and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move then to Agenda Item Seven as a public hearing, Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Fee Changes. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public on proposed fee changes for fiscal year 2025. I declare the public hearing open.
Gene Hill, Finance, here at the City of Pocatello, Mayor, Council. The reason for these proposed fee increases, if I can, is strictly to make it so that these are operationally neutral, so to cover our increased costs. I'll talk a little bit about that more later, but as we know, inflation is basically going up, and will continue to go up for a while, and so that's the purpose of it. So, with that, I'll stop.
Just a minute. Any questions for Gene? Okay, thank you. Oh, Gene, before you leave, sorry, I should have asked this. Have you received any comments or anything that you've received in your office that we have not seen as a council?
No.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
None further.
Okay, thank you. Then I'd look for any testimony supporting the application.
Good evening, council. I'm speaking uncommitted to this application. I mainly just wanted to share with you...
Would you state your name?
Heather Disilco, Pocatello. Thank you for reminding me. I should know that by now, right? I'm speaking uncommitted to this application. I just wanted to express a couple of concerns. I remember during the, it was probably the May, maybe the June budget meeting, one of the first two budget meetings, there was a comment made about the finance was reexamining how interfund transfers are made, how you determine those interfund transfers, like the administrative fee, the right-of-way maintenance fee, all of those. And I never saw that come back before council, and I think that that was important. I think that's important because these fees that are set for the enterprise accounts for water, sanitation, WPC, are based on those budgets. And I know that the effort was to make that more equitable among the departments, but I never saw that come back before you. So, just going forward, I think, this is something I tried to look into earlier this year, and in February I put in a public record request, and I asked for what the city's policies were, their methodology for calculating that, and I got a denial back that those records didn't exist. So, that concerns me that there's not something in paper, written down, off, you know, that somebody that's, you know, walking into the finance department couldn't pick up and see how that's all determined. So, I just wanted to pass that along to you because I think that is an important part of setting those fees. The second thing that concerned me a little bit was with the rate study. I know we just had a rate study done for the next five years. I feel like there were some aspects, and I know that was set for a point in time, but while it was still in draft form, there were some things left out. The annexation of the 500 acres, and then this most recent, the addition of the sanitation. So, personally, I feel like those rate studies were already short day one. I'm just passing it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Okay, any opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason. Thank you. I'm opposed to the application because, as I've said, the people are barely making it, and a lot of our cost of living increase in inflation is based on this very kind of thing of government taking control of everything. And then we get things like, I've addressed the alcohol trade, the tobacco, the vape, the porn, the lotteries, casinos, all these things that create the problems of our society, and then we have to increase more police and gels and rehabs and nonprofits, all these things. It's of losing, losing, spiraling down. I call it a sewer eddy, to the point it's destroying our country, it's destroying the family, our children. And literally, people in this town can't even afford a place to live or food to eat or a water bill. And I'm not trying to be offensive, but you guys gave yourself an 11% pay raise last fall, and you have a raise in benefits, and it's not our job to pay your vacation, sick leave, retirement, or insurance. It's your job. We pay you a decent wage, an honorable wage, just like a public, I mean, a private employer, and that person saves for their own vacation. If they want insurance, they can get together with their buddies or pay their own. That we've got to get back to being the Christian constitutional republic of we the people is sovereignty, as an independent people, as God established us to be. We're going down the tube. We've got people this close to pushing a button in our own town because they can't take it anymore. You have children committing suicide here. You have children living on the streets here. You have children being used in rifles here. You have children being brainwashed to be Nazis here, immoral, violent, and that's when God says you're done. We don't need fee increases. Most of this can go away off the budget when you sell it back and use it back in private where it should be. I appreciate all true service. I will stand forever against this because I've, I mean, we've seen it over and over for millennia. What socialism, communism, fascism, this kind of thing leads to is destruction. Nobody succeeds, ever. And to put us under that, including international law or any of it, with the European Union, UN, any foreign entity is an act of treason. And my family go back to their evolution. My scouts have served and given their lives. I taught them to do their duty to govern their country and be morally straight about it, and they have. And that's what's being desecrated here, an honorable people losing everything they have, working an honorable trade, saving their money, having their homes, their own wells like this, and that's south of town. And we watched it during Northgate with the Hertz and the Rups and all that. Let's be Zion, America under God, and the Constitution. We will succeed, and I share it humbly in the name of...
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then I, oh, would you like an opportunity to...
I'm going to answer the questions out of order if I can, again, Gene Hill. First off, I think it's incredibly wrong to go after council for raising itself 11% when you serve voluntarily, and I think the community should know that, and the amount of money that you get, plus a little bit of stipend for healthcare, I think is ridiculous because you guys spend a lot of time working on budgets, working on things that go far beyond, the private sector would never pay that low of an amount. So, I just want to make that very clear. Second, on the fees and the rate studies, I think that we spent a lot of time working with, what is it? Ratatouilles? Projecting what we saw in the future. We talked about the annexation, so those fees were in there, and so, you know, because this has been discussed, and so I think that it's important to note that we hire these consultants to look into the future and to look at the uncertainty with the data that we have, just that point. The third one about the interfund activities, no, we're not releasing or I don't want to release any type of policy that we don't have written yet because we are redoing things that have been done for years, and it's going to take, you know, another six months or more to make sure that we go through, test this, and we have things that are equitable and fair before we release it. Any questions?
We'll just, can we make sure that when we get that policy all put together and stuff, we'll make sure Heather can get a...
Yes.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. Then with that, I declare the public hearing closed. So, we will move to Agenda Item Eight is, Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing, Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Foregone Tax Levy and Resolution. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding the proposal to levy and levy the foregone amount for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $329,654 to be included in the fiscal year 2025 budget in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802. Following the public hearing, council may wish to adopt a resolution to levy the foregone amount of $329,654 for use in fiscal year 2025 in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802. I declare the public hearing opened.
And Gene Hill, Finance Department, Council, Mayor. First off, I want to thank you for the hard work on the budget that we've done. It's done a lot, you know, working very conservatively to keep the taxes lower for the last several years, which has allowed us to have the balance of 5.5 million in the foregone because of the conservative things that we've taken prior years, you know, and it's always good to put away when you can. This year, we're asking for the 1% based on the highest average of the task, excuse me, of the tax for the ONM in the amount of $325,000 that will go towards the public safety and help in some shortfalls there. I think it's very important to remember that we're asking for 4%. CPI is 3%, but if you back out the things that the government doesn't count for, food, medical, dental, I mean, you were here last time I was up here, we were talking about Blue Cross versus Pacific because Pacific was 9.5, you know, it was like a $2 million over two years, right? Dental's up 6%. Food, depending on what you look at, is up anywhere from 5% to 15%. And so, we really do need this foregone, so...
Okay, any questions for Gene before? Okay. Have we received any comments from the public that we have not seen, the council? Madam Clerk, have you received any in your...
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, we will look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application.
Can I write my name down again?
Oh, you don't have to write it down. Just announce it.
Thank you. Heather Disilco, I'm speaking uncommitted to the foregone. I'm actually not 100% against 1% foregone if there was a plan, and I don't feel like this council really is looking beyond this year for this foregone. I heard it said multiple times that there is just nowhere within this budget to cut, that the budget, the department budget is already on a shoestring. I understand the inflation and everything that's taking place because we're all feeling it in our homes as well, as you are. But I do think that there was a way to have avoided this foregone without doing cuts because if you were just to look at the positions that you added this year, the four positions, that would have eliminated the need for this 1% foregone. Now, if you had come with a plan and said, we're going to do this 1% foregone to put towards the other deficit, the other shortfalls, so that you're not having to take 100% of your estimated interest revenue next year, you might have convinced me the other way. So, I'm just saying that I would encourage you to look forward beyond just this one year when making these decisions, and I do think there's an opportunity here to eliminate or reduce some of the deficit you're going to be facing next year because you already know that your 3% increase for next year is already going to be eaten up by your health benefits. That's a given. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello. I'm opposed to this because in old days, you took a budget, you presented it to the people, and it was according to constitutional law and the actual needs of what a government's role was, and then you took a census if that, if we the people approved it, and then you divided it equally among the poll tax, the head of the home or the business, and the business. If not, then you went back and did other things to the budget till it was approved by we the people, and then a census taken and divided equally as a poll tax. If there's something left over, it came back to the people, just like a lot of businesses will give back what was extra. And so, that's what I'm opposed to, and also because it's from one, a previous year going to the next year as a holdover. I mean, the state has millions like this, and so does the county, and so does the city and different things when I've seen that in the past. I mean, millions and millions and millions of dollars that are being illegally held over and illegally taxed upon us and where there's really no need. And as I've said over and over that, like Ross Park, you're closing the park because the school year started, and so now that's going to sit. When we have clear end of September where it could be used, and it should be in the private sector, so sell it, just like the wellness complex should be sold, and the garbage and the parks and, you know, I mean, the recreation programs, it's not your job. And you're competing against people like Gold's Gym and Fitness Inc. and others who are putting their all into it out of their own pocket. Same thing with the nonprofits. You give donations to nonprofit organizations that we have no say in. That's socialism. They go out and earn it. If they need donations, they go out to the public and ask for it, not you. And so, there's multiple things that can be taken out of the budget that would put it back in our pocket. People could then use that money to build their own businesses and provide for their own housing, provide their own transportation, same thing with the transit. I mean, you... I mean, you buy all these buses and have all these expenses that doesn't even pay for itself at gross amounts of loss. And if you're going to do it, then get like eight passenger vans and make it reasonable and charge what it actually costs to run the system so there's no charge on except the users. That's how it's supposed to work, but it's supposed to be in the private sector. And you have good companies in this town who provide a good service, but people don't use it because they have to charge a fortune due to the fees and all the things they have to pay for. And so that's why I keep saying, be real. We just sat a prayer at the meeting, we said a pledge of allegiance. Do we meet it or not?
Thank you, thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then I would offer Jean an opportunity to.
Jean Hill Finance, I think it's really disingenuous when people say that we don't plan at the city. What was the rate study about? It's a five-year forecast looking at what we need for the city. I can tell you that I know the executive staff and the council spend a lot of time planning and looking into the future, looking at possible services that we need and things that, so we are in the budget process, and we do look at those things. I mean, we have an ongoing list of things that we need to do. And so I think it's, again, very disingenuous of that. I would like to also say that this is risk mitigation, right? And what it gets down to is we have been up here twice this year where we took $2 million, we put it into reserve to take care of the police retirement. We took another million dollars and put it into reserve to cover for workers' comp. And so I think that we are doing, I think the city's very solid is what I'm trying to say. And because we've drawn down on what was risk mitigation where we reserve taxes for today, I think that that's very important to continue to do that. As far as privatization, without the public safety, the police, the fire that make this community a safe place to be, we couldn't have the private sector. And so I would absolutely always want to make sure that we fund these services. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel this items before you, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Mansfield.
Sorry, buddy. Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution to levy the forgone amount of $329,654 for the use in fiscal year 25 in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802 as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight.
Second, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Any discussion? Okay, I don't usually ask for that, so Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mansfield.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Cheatham.
No.
Lurick.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we will move to Agenda Item Nine, Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Preparation Date, or Budget Preparation Update and Publication Approval. Chief Financial Officer Jean Hill will update the council on fiscal year 2025 budget items. Council may wish to approve items for publication in the Idaho State Journal in preparation for a public hearing to be held at the August 15, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion since this is just a necessary republication. We had, what was it, new construction was left out of the publication, but the budget is not changing at all. We're just adding in new publication, new construction, which requires us to publish again before we can have the hearing on the 15th. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine, the fiscal year 25 budget preparation update and publication approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Land Water Conservation Fund Grant Application. Council may wish to approve submission of a grant application to the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation for submission of the, to the federal water, federal land water conservation fund for the Centennial Rainy Park project, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $1,200,000 with a 50% match, which has been budgeted in the Science and Environment Budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant Application, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
As outlined in Agenda Item Number Ten.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Paulson.
Geez, guys, settle down. Yeah, he finished longer before you, so.
Mid-motion.
It's okay, he still did it. We have a motion and a second. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Airport Resolution and Lease Agreement Driscoll Top Hay. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Driscoll Top Hay for property at the airport and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The lease, the leased premise is 20 acres of bare ground for the purpose of tarped hay and shipping container storage. The term will be five years with, with five-year renewal. The rental rate will be $11,900 per year and will increase annually according to the CPI with a full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the resolution and lease agreement with Driscoll Top Hay and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Airport Resolution and Lease Agreement Darren Dobbins. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Darren Dobbins for a, for a hangar at the airport for the purpose of aircraft storage and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The hangar is approximately 1,760 square feet, and the lease term will be for five years at a rental rate of $315.37 per month, increased annually according to the CPI, with a full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the resolution and approval of a lease agreement with Darren Dobbins for a hangar at the airport for the purpose of aircraft storage and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Piggyback Bid Acceptance for Skate Park Design and Build Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to accept the piggyback bid of Sourcewell Competitively Bid Contract Number 112420-Art with artisan skate parks for the purchase of a turnkey design-build skate park in the amount of $500,000 and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the project has been provided by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Thirteen as listed.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Lurick.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I had a conversation with Tom and Councilmember Cheatham.
Cheatham.
And I'd like for Tom to have some conversation on this specific item that I think would be kind of pertinent for us to kind of understand.
Okay.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Good.
Would you like me to just review what we talked about?
Just jump in.
Absolutely. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. So we are moving forward with a Sourcewell contract for this particular design-build. Skate parks have pretty much unlimited opportunities and unlimited designs, and so it is very difficult to design a set of specs that you can competitively bid that's going to meet all of the criteria that we need. Idaho Code allows us to use a cooperative purchasing agency, which means that services have been competitively bid elsewhere, and we are allowed to piggyback those costs. And so that is the road that we've decided to go down. And we're looking to do what's called a design-build on this project. And so we met with multiple skate park constructors. We have a pretty good idea of what it costs per square foot. And so with a design-build, we're able to set a budget and say, what can you do in that budget? And then they can design towards that. And then we could determine if that's something that is gonna fulfill our needs, and it also gives us the opportunity to review their costs and make sure they're not overrunning on costs. What the Sourcewell bid allows us to do is it's a time of materials quote with a certain percentage of discount. And so as these companies bid this, they bid the discount over MSRP, for lack of a better word. And so through this process, we can get it designed, we can get it built, it's a flowing project, so we can make changes as we go, as we run into different issues with topography, with drainage, all sorts of things. So we feel this is a very good option. It is a confusing way to do it, and we understand that. But we feel to get the best product for the community, this is, this is a direction that we want to go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could I ask, expand a little bit on that?
Absolutely.
I am not a skateboarder. I still have my 1964 skateboard in the garage.
You look like you might.
Living on a farm, we had a driveway about 20 feet long, and that's as far as you could go. So I guess I'm curious here, I've watched a lot on the Olympics the last few days, and I saw some skateboarding. Is this designed by feature that they provide? Is that how we know, I mean, doing a certain kind of feature in the skate park will cost a certain amount of money?
So they base their costs off square footage. So there's basically two routes you can go down on these, on these designs. You've either got steel structures, or you've got concrete structures. And then you've got, and Brent can maybe talk because he's a skateboarder, you have the pipes and the tubs, or you have the ramps that are steel. The direction that we feel is the best is we're going fully concrete, and so it will have a lot of streetscape, but it'll also have bowls and ramps. And the design we're shooting for is so that entry-level skaters can ride it, but also people that are very gifted at that can also ride it. And that's one of the big things about this design-build is that's hard to specify in a concealed competitive bid. They can make a very complicated ramp facilitate a beginning skater and an advanced skater by just the geometries they use. And so I don't know if that answered your question or if I just rambled.
Sort of, kind of, if I could follow up. Do we know what a, I don't know how big a bowl is that they ride in, they look pretty big on television, but do we know what something like that's going to cost or what they have cost in the Sourcewell contracts that you lacked?
Yeah, and so it will, it will, the whole park will be based upon the design that we like, and it will be based on the square footage. So we're not buying each particular amenity. We're saying we have this much money, how many square feet can we, how many square feet can we build of a skate park? And then that's where we can review the designs as they come forward and say, here's what works, here's what doesn't.
Is there a, is there a design standard that we should be looking at or that you have looked at?
Not really. It's basically, there are standards of safety, of course, but that's where we allow these companies to get very creative. They're very creative, we saw some pretty awesome things. That's where we can start playing around with different amenities, different ramps, different streetscapes.
Part of the process will also include survey to the skater.
I'm sorry, you are.
And Butler Park's director.
Thank you.
So part of the process in the design will be to reach out to the community, all the kids and adults that skate can provide input, so we're building it to exactly what they want, the type of features they like. So it will be completely custom to Pocatello, it'll be completely different than probably any other thing, it's a park that Councilman Nichols has ever ridden. It should be really cool because I'm not gonna ride it either.
Yeah, they gave us an example of their survey, and it's pretty, it's pretty cool because they'll, they go through and say, are you an advanced skater, a beginner? What kind of ramps do you like? What kind of features do you like? And it goes down, and then they can come to us and say, here's what the community says they want, and here's what we think that would look like in a design.
May I ask Councilman Nichols?
Sure. Absolutely.
You have some experience at this, I don't know if anybody else on the council does, but do you have a vision of what you would like to see in this skate park?
I think Tom did a pretty good explanation of that, sort of an all-surface, excuse me, an all-wheels type of park where people can transition from a beginner up through even an expert level, so will comply with all of the needs of the community.
So they call like streetscapes is like where you can grind down a rail, you've probably seen that where they jump up. So there's certain populations that like that streetscape, you know, they go downstairs, let's say, but there's other people that like to ride, you know, on a ramp or in a bowl. And so I think the direction we're going is trying to capture both of those in one park.
Okay.
Maybe when we do a ribbon cutting for this, we'll have Councilmember Nichols give us a display and.
Carry the scissors.
He can carry, he can skate up there and, yeah, cut away. I've got an attorney that's a little nervous now, but I think it's, got potential.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I am really excited about this project, and I think this is a great use of ARPA money, so I just wanted to make sure that people understand that's where this money is coming from, the American Rescue Plan Act. And I think it's something that we've heard from a lot of people in our community that they really want this. So I like that we're, we're getting this done, and I think, you know, we have some good expertise. I just want to say, seeing as I got beat up by the slide, I'm gonna stay off of this thing.
We can try it again, I promise we can do it better.
Okay. But the ribbon cutting, I will not be doing a demonstration, I'll be watching.
We'll expect you there, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just say, we will not be putting any city council member on any skateboard, even Councilmember Nichols, he can do it afterwards. We will not be doing that at the ribbon cutting.
That's not good risk mitigation.
No.
Heard poking you in the ribs during that discussion.
No, he wasn't poking you there, but he flinched a little bit.
One thing, if I could, Pickerman Dan and Brent and some of my staff, they've really done their homework, they've checked all the boxes. We had a lot of, a lot of good meetings with, with different companies, and so I think we're going down a really awesome path with this.
Super, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Council President Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Nichols.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a time limit of 15 minutes for this agenda item and three minutes per speaker. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Taysom.
Thank you.
Thank you. In our pledge of allegiance, in our preamble and our Declaration of Independence, and also in Section 98 and 101 of the Doctrine and Covenants, we declare ourselves a Christian Constitutional Free Independent Republic, of we, the people of the United States, is sovereignty, and did ordain and establish the Constitution as the supreme law of this land, as it was established by God, who said that he established that Constitution to maintain our liberty, and we are to befriend and maintain it as the law of this land. And he said, "Now as pertaining to the laws of man whatsoever is more or less than this cometh of evil, we are to forsake all evil." I'm all about everybody having a nice, fun time, having a beautiful, safe, healthy, happy, wholesome, peaceful town that's prospering, and it can be done. I appreciate all true service of all public servants. I, I was raised under parents who gave their all, their whole adult lives to public service, and I do that on a daily basis myself. I might not sit in an elected position. I would like to sometime. Anyway, I sincerely, I mean, I'm on the streets every day, and I work for everything I get. I don't get any assistance anywhere from anyone. If I do, it's somebody I work for, and I work it back off. I and my family are under some major retaliation on a daily basis, and some in life and death emergency status is right this moment, including my little grandchildren, who I heard crying down there on Darby Street, and nobody coming to help address that, and others being held illegally in jail and on false charges. I value everyone. Everybody is priceless to me. I don't care what color you are, where you come from. We're supposed to be stewards of each other. We're supposed to be stewards of each other, this earth, our freedom, and what we're here on earth to become and do. And that's to be a Zion people so everybody gets back to our Father, Mother, and Heaven and Savior. And I'm not ashamed to speak of Christianity in a public meeting, because this is God's land of liberty and promise, and we've lost sight of that and what our mission is here. And when I say that pledge of allegiance, it is sacred to me. And as I led scouts for 20 years, I taught them to do their duty to God and their country and be morally straight in it. And they somehow have given their all and have earned Purple Hearts. Some of my family did not make it out of the Andersonville Confederate prison. They were starved to death. And my mom, my granny, my dads, my brothers, my cousins, my sons have served this country and have given their all. And there are so many people in this town who won't even fly a flag, who won't even say the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you. Kirk Valentine.
Goodwill toward all creation. Guess I'm supposed to sign this? Oh, Kirk Valentine. I am actually part of the new annex area. And what I would like to do is either get guidance or put a bug in your guys' ears as far as, the area is very rural still. Now, I understand and actually agree with the code as far as your utilities deposit goes. I get it. The part I don't get is I'm being told that me and my house, I still have to pay the same utilities deposit, but I only have access to one utility. I don't even have the option of two of them. It's not like I have access to it and I'm turning it down. I literally don't. Can't access it. So $150 deposit on a $22 a month garbage bill seems very excessive. And I'm assuming that there's somewhere where you guys understand, you just annexed an area, and it's probably going to have to be very fluid. There's people down there that do have access, and they'll be in a different situation than me. Is there any point of reference? Because I know I'm probably on a timeline here. Actually, with PSI, I've only got till the end of September, and then they're going to want more money? So I'm just trying to get things done, and I don't know where to go with it, and I just don't feel it's fair for me to pay the same thing when I don't have access. And hopefully, we can get it resolved fairly quickly. The other aspect of that is I have not heard back from the sanitation manager about hoping for driveway service. I've had them tell me that my gravel driveway does not meet their criteria, while I've had a garbage truck come up my driveway and empty my garbage for the last seven years. Obviously, if there's eight inches of snow on the ground, I don't expect them to do it until I plow it. Things that I think need to be addressed. Any direction would be Connie's been great in helping me, so maybe just tell her to get ahold of me. She has my info.
Connie is great. You're right. We will, yeah, we can't really respond and stuff back here, but if you'll hold on, I want to visit with you after our meeting here in just a minute. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me put my address on here real fast.
Super. Thank you.
Eric Stewart, 1128 North Hayes, Number Two, Polkettala, Idaho. Here to talk about Precinct Six. I did a survey a year ago of the 1,252 residents in Precinct Six, which includes Polkettala High School, that area, Old Town. 120 people said they were not impacted by the mayor and council. 27 people said they were satisfied. 27 people said they were not satisfied with the mayor and council. Last October, I wrote a letter to the mayor and council that included the comment, compliments of those that are satisfied, included the concerns and proposed solutions for those that are not satisfied, and we gave that letter to the mayor and the city council. In December, Brian Blad responded to that, and I assume that represented the council as well. We appreciate that response. As a result of that, we did a second letter. It included the compliments, the concerns and proposed solutions, and the mayor's response as for to each of the comments based on his letter. It also included my recommendations for each of the concerns and proposed solutions. Took that back out. We knocked on every door in the 1,252 doors. We invited those that entered the door to sign the letter and read the letter. We wanted to know that the people in the precinct saw your response. That was one of the purposes. The 142 people did sign the letter, and you'll see that in the letter. We wanted the council to know that the people saw your letter, so, so that's the purpose. I'm one of those that support the mayor and council. I appreciate your work. I really want to call attention to the compliments that the mayor and the city council did receive. I know it's a lot of work to spend days and going to get the response from 1,252 homes. I hope that this letter will equal, take a few minutes and read the letter. Instead of going to visit all of them, make your job just a little bit easier in representing the city. I did send, give the original signatures to Aubrey. I think she delivered them to the mayor. I did send an electronic version to the mayor and ask him to distribute it to the council, so you have that. I'm here to present a hard copy for each of the members of the council.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Super. Thank you, Eric.
Their names.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for, for joining us. Everybody has got their copy, and everybody received this electronically as well, so...
I got Hayden.
Oh, they're named. I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the names. All right, Linda?
I got Hayden.
I got Mansfield for some reason.
This is Mangum, Cheatham's. I should have looked at these. I'm sorry, Hayden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us tonight. And with that, we are adjourned.